At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, November first, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry, David, Mike, Stannis, and myself, Jack, Willie, are your supervisors. We have Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the Auditor's Office. And Luan Goki, our Administrative Assistant, is in the background, making sure we do things right. And first item on our agenda today is a departure from usual. County engineer has no business for the board today, so Julia Fern and Pam Shintaller are here to talk about ASAP.
Morning.
Good morning. We're actually going to talk about the Coalition, but that's okay. I work for ASEC, that's the confusion.
So that's what it's on my, it's on agenda.
So what we are here for is the Joy Free Communities Grant, six years in place. We are asking for the Board of Supervisors to proceed with offering two thousand dollars as a request of us to approve grant money that will be provided by the ECIA. And the cost of the grant rating is seven thousand dollars. The ECI USDA grant provides two thousand dollars of that. Jackson County Prevention Coalition will provide one thousand dollars. The request of the City of Makoka has already been granted of two thousand dollars. So we're asking the Board of Supervisors to support that. There is in your packet that you have provided what the Coalition has done and what the Joy Free Communities Grant is proceeding with providing to our younger children in our community.
So this is basically the same grant we got last time, five years, one hundred twenty-five thousand a year, correct?
It is.
So I don't want to be like the tight one or anything, but does part of the one hundred twenty-five thousand that you get, can it be used for this to write it?
No, that's specifically in grant rules, you can't use the grant money to get more grant money from them. It's unethical.
Well, it would be a way to get another five years.
Out of them, you can't use their money to get money from them. They have a problem with that.
You're just dreaming, Mike.
But the Coalition has done some fundraising, so we do have money of our own to kick in that they've been working at to have that, to have some skin in the game.
I would make the motion for the two thousand dollars for the grant.
Um, I have a second.
Make a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I guess, yeah, you know, I mean, it certainly shows in the statistics in the graphs that you come and show with us. I mean, it's, if you can get that kind of funding for five years, it's certainly a minimal investment. You know, just so we see progress.
We work hard to do that, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, I motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Well, I don't see Marty.
I don't see his van.
Talked to him this morning.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to do your second?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-fifth, word proceedings as written by Auditor Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
So move.
In a second to approve having the minutes of our previous meeting published, all those in favor, I motion carry.
And just a discussion and maybe a direction is what I'm looking for, trying to change how we did budgets last year. What would be the Board's wish as far as scheduling some Mondays? If that's the day, whatever day, getting it because we need to be a month and a half ahead to see what your calendars are full or not. But maybe instead of having all of these outside agencies come in to prepare to talk to you about budgets and such, what would you think about instead scheduling a day? And I picked Mondays just because I looked at your calendars and it's in, and it's empty. But bringing those agencies in on those Mondays and also doing departments, I think we can probably do it in two days.
Oh, yeah, when can we start that? Well, we won't be able to start.
So tentatively, what we've looked at is looking at Monday, the twelfth, and Monday, the nineteenth in December. So we can at least get to see if this is going to work or not. The thing is, the other thing that we need to really be aware of because we did receive the pie award from the state, paper has gone up significantly. We used to buy paper for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars a case. Right now, paper is at fifty dollars a case. So trying to get everybody to come in, to present, to try and reduce our amount of paper because this is, it's a long tedious process, and we're trying to figure out how to do this without wasting paper every time you turn around about running three and four and five different reports. If you think about three Board of Supervisors, myself and Shelley, every time we run something, it's times five.
Well, I questioned that last year when Shelley was running, we reported off three or four times. Let's do that once and get everybody's budget in. And let's have a little more, when they do their budget, I think they could have a little more explanation on that.
Well, that was the other thing I'd like to ask the Board is that, I'll use the Sheriff's Office, that's a good one to pick on, sorry. But with having all of the different deputies, the jailers, and all of the different personnel and such, one of the things that you say right away is this line item, who is that salary for? So if we could get a little better explanation, so you understand that this is, you know, and how did you come up with a whatever percentage increase for this line item? I think we need to know, are you thinking about building or building, are you thinking about buying a piece of equipment and what is this for? I would like to see more detail coming from these department heads, even though we're coming into meetings and such. I think if we have it in paper, they've written it down, and there's somewhat of a justification of how did you come to this number, I think would help you make your decisions.
Well, I think that's imperative information that we need to know.
We need to kind of go back and look what happened last year, and I agree, we spent so much on just printing and reprinting and reprinting. We need to do something different, and let's try.
Yeah, and I never did get to that whole end of the year thing like I wanted to.
And that's okay.
It's perfect information that should be included in going forward and why and what and what we did do or didn't do. I mean, that even changes our outlook somewhat, you know.
It does. Yeah, it does. Yeah.
So at that time, you also indicated maybe a different format for the budgets, like the, how you were going to address that. But I, I, I don't know that that's.
I think that more, more detailed information needs to come first.
I mean, the line items are important to me because I go through them.
Yes, well, to me, anything that they want to either add or increase in their budget, there needs to be justification for that and why they want to do that. And you know, we just can't do it because they want it.
I'm just trying to, that's what, I said that we were going to try and make some changes. This is just kind of one thing that we need to change. We need to figure out how to do things better and more efficiently. So, yeah, I mean, let's, let's at least be thinking about it, talking about it, trying to come up with a different way to do this.
And I think most department heads are responsible enough to spend the time. Now, there's a couple that may not. But I need, they need to spend the time and say, well, this number was there last year. Do I need to issue, what was it for? You know, you don't just carry the number over because it was there.
And I think that we have to look at this whole process. I had Shelley work backwards. What's my, what I call the drop dead date that we have to have this done? I may also suggest, excuse me, to the comptboard, maybe don't. I would, excuse me, I would like them to meet a little bit later. Instead of November, maybe having them wait a little bit before other counties meet and have an idea of what other counties are doing. Excuse me. I don't know. Is that a possibility? Is that a good, does it make a difference? I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. So that's kind of what we're looking at, some different things to try and streamline this a little bit to. And instead, like I said, we're going to compact all of these outside agencies and have them come in on, I think most of them can, I think we counted eight or ten, I think, Luan, when I talked to her, then we were started with then elected officials and departments here in the courthouse.
Well, I'm certainly okay with doing these on a Monday from nine until whatever, one or.
So it's Mondays, is that a good day?
Yeah.
Okay, so the reason why I thought Mondays is we've looked ahead, you know, it's a month and a half away, we've looked ahead and.
What about Don? Want to get an email?
Yeah, well, I'll be visiting with Don, and I just needed to see if this is something that, you know, we wanted to do or not. But, and if it doesn't work, then we'll, we'll pick another day, we'll look at your calendars. Is there a bad day that doesn't work? I mean, it looked like Mondays was a good day, so.
Don't know. Normally, well, yeah, Wednesday sometimes are busy, but.
Okay, let's start with Monday then. Let's start with Monday.
I would say Monday would be best.
Okay, so let's start with Monday and see if we can get that to work or not.
I mean, we certainly have to include whoever might be here in the future.
Absolutely, but at least we know that we're going to start, and now Shelley can get budgets, we can get the timeline for budgets now sent out.
Hopefully, department heads have been thinking about that, you know.
Yeah, and you know, again, you know, depends if departments have budgets or if they have, I'm sorry, if they have projects that they need to be getting estimates on, we need to have them get that done now so they can put that in their budgets, you know, so at least they've got a.
They certainly have changed. Projects have changed.
Projects have changed, yes, yes. So, okay, I will start with Monday, December twelfth, and also again on the nineteenth, and we'll see if that works. And if not, then we'll check ahead, we'll look at your calendars and see if there's better days. Other than that, the other thing, just so I wanted to make you aware of, they have started putting in the monitoring wells down at the fairgrounds. I was, last week, I got an email from Tetra Tech, is the company, they are going to put an additional third well in. The location that they showed me is over by the Historical Society Building and right on the curve there. That's where they're going to put another well in there, so we will end up with three wells on the property in that, too.
I did look at that. They had a spot right there on the gravel between the two buildings or something on the curve there.
Did you get, did you get an email on that or?
No, it was on the last map we had.
Oh. Okay, I didn't see that, but that's what they just notified me, that we're going to have to put a third well.
I think it had a yellow spot like.
Oh, like a little pin, okay. Well, anyway, that's, I haven't, I was there last week. Where they, where Bjorn and I pinned it at and where they're drilling it, it's a little bit different, but that's okay. I don't know if I would put it where they put it, but we'll see. I'll go back down, I'll drive down and take a look if they're done now, but. I guess we've notified them that that's a heavy-use area. So, other than that, I have nothing for the Board today.
Is this something that sticks up in the air?
I hope not. It's supposed to be flush mouth, because it's supposed to be flush. I just hope that it doesn't. Where they had the truck set up at was actually in the middle of the road. And if they grade that, it's going to get hit. So maybe they weren't set up to drill, but, so I will go back down, I'll take a look. Yeah, because where I located it was actually in the grass, but where the truck was.
We need to look at it, too, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah. So, that's all that I have for the Board.
Okay. I don't know. Luan, are you trying to call Marty?
Nobody can.
We're going to recess and see if we know Marty is coming. This time, we'll reconvene the meeting, we're being joined by Marty, who is a Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm not really prepared today, but we have the welcome center cleaned out. Everything, we put the, the table here that you guys wanted out of the upstairs, the roll top desk we put down at the peace pipe player, and then the rest of it went to the care facility, okay? I got the problem that we talked, discussed yesterday, and took care of that. Let's see, what else? I had to cut a hole, or not cut a hole, make a path back into the septic tank so they could check the septic. I think I fixed the rodent problem. We gassed it down there to get rid of all the bugs. When I went down there yesterday, there was a few flies in there, but that was about it, and they were dead. I think we cleaned it up as good as we could, or, you know, it looked good, I thought. I don't know if you guys went down, looked at it or not. Okay, what else? The furnace, I called Scott this morning. I asked him if he said something about the first of December, and I says, is there any way you could come and set the furnace for us? He says, yeah, I could probably do that, just so we had heat in there. I don't know if you're aware, we're going to run it off of propane first and then switch it over to natural gas. He said he didn't know if he could make it there next week, but the, certainly the week after that, he'd be there. I called Mike this morning to see if we want, where we wanted to get the LP tank. FS is going to set the tank next week. We're going to temporarily set the tank on the southeast corner of the building. Because the furnace, I wasn't for sure, but the furnace is going to be right inside the walk door to the right is where they're setting it.
That's close to the bathroom area, too.
Yes, yeah, that way.
Now we're talking about the utility. I thought we were still talking about the welcome center. What do you mean furnace? We already put gas down at the welcome center.
I know what I'm talking about. I'm sorry.
We have to preface by my location.
All right, I'm sorry. And right now, I'm down at the hay cap building. The mulberry tree and I don't know what other tree there, but I'm going to cut that up, and then there's about seven or eight railroad ties that are underneath the tree. I'm going to clean all them up. The railroad tie has got big spikes in it, so I can't take them to the landfill, so I'm going to take them to the landfill instead over here.
Instead of the brush pile.
Brush pile, yes. I don't know where the railroad ties come from. They've been there apparently for a while.
I think they've used those to kind of outline what was supposed to be the kids' play area.
Oh, well, it could be.
And they had some, they did have some outdoor equipment, but it was in such bad shape. I think maybe they took it down. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's back in the backside of the building.
Anyway, I think that's what it was.
Sort of the tires in bad shape then.
Yes, yes. Um. Then that's.
Going, going back to the welcome center.
Okay.
We did get a, a letter from Tom or an email from Tom about the, the big welcome center sign and the sign that was on the building that the the people that are doing the project in Sebula, they would like those signs. And it said, Tom.
What sign was on the building? Do you talk to the map?
It was like a map.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
And then.
So you took that down?
Yes.
And where is it?
It's in my van.
Okay.
Anyway, they would like those signs there, and we just have to tell Tom they can have them. If that's the, because they want to kind of have a, a mini welcome center at their new facility that they're putting up.
I think it's on Luan's agenda, but it doesn't matter when you.
Oh.
And are you talking the big sign out in front?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, yeah, because we didn't take that out. But I did take the map down, and it's in my van, and wherever you want it to go, let me know, and I'll take it there, or they can come and get it, whatever.
Well, I think we'll have them come and get it.
Okay.
So they're going to take the sign down, the welcome center sign down that are on the posts in the front yard?
Yep.
Do you have all the letters and stuff for that? They were in the basement? And where are they at? Yeah, just shake your head.
You know.
Can you find them back?
No, they're gone.
What letters did they put on them?
Little plastic things that they slid in there to spell some. The, they, they went with loads in the landfill. I never thought about that, you know. I didn't know if they'd ever be used again or not, so we, I'm going to be honest with you, we never thought about it. We just, all the stuff that was in the basement went.
Probably a good idea.
It was. Huh? Come on, you're going to say it, say it so I can hear it.
Somebody equalized you there or what?
I was, I have a trailer, and I got a bunch of grain bin parts in it. And then on top of that, I had about twenty pieces of re-rig sticking about that far out the front. And I was working on the hitch, and I turned, my phone rang, I had my phone sitting in my car.
It was me.
And well, no, it wasn't you because I wouldn't answer it. Well, I turned around and took off and just right into it. The only thing that really saved me is I had one of them little headlight things on, you know, and it, it took most of the hit, but it got me a couple spots. And then a little bit later, I had the hand grinder round my finger. And then later on, I was putting the tire on it and leaned into it, and there was a bolt sticking out.
Part of your report.
Well, you asked. Yeah, what?
All you're doing is proving your accident.
It's the first time I named myself for a law.
Well, actually, I'll get inside, so what, I haven't seen you, I drove by this farm to tell the outside footage are all in also, and some plumbing's been down, or what's going on down there?
Um, I know they tore concrete yesterday, but they're not there today, so he's taken off and won't be back until next week. That's about all I know. The electrician is installing electric in the utility shed or whatever you want to call that.
So we talked about some temporary heat, if it's going to be too long or too late, the weather looks good. You know, but if we have to put up a partition or some bisqueen or something.
We brought a little heater, I don't know how much heat that kicks out. Does it kick out quite a bit?
Well, maybe not for the whole building, I don't suppose.
Well, no, but if it would heat just, you know.
Well, it'll heat a twenty by twenty, I'm sure, because, yeah, I've used them also.
We was at the Halloween parade in Illinois, and then balloon things come by, and he was two blocks away, we could feel that heat. Wow.
Oh, for the last.
Yeah, gleena pumpkin parade thing.
Yeah, wow.
Could not believe that. But anyway, they're moving right along with it, you know.
Well, good. I mean, yeah, I mean, so.
I've been meaning to tell John, but the place that sells the construction stuff just down the street from that.
Stetson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've got used styrofoam for like ten bucks a sheet. If they're looking, they need something to cover the inside footings because they're not deep enough.
Oh.
John had mentioned that.
Okay.
That was some stuff I'm doing.
All right, well, he's gone today, and like he said, he won't be back until Monday is what he told me.
All right.
All right.
I'll try to think of it, too.
Well, yeah, rather than use good stuff, it's thirty bucks a sheet.
Or he knows it.
Is it, how thick is it? Did you say two inch?
Actually, I have two inches. We've got different pallets of it. Actually, we've got some that's four inches down.
Okay, anything else?
No, we'll have Luan get ahold of Tom and tell him about the signs and go from there.
Yeah, I probably will take that sign out and put it in the, in the shed over here because it's, it's barely fit in there. But I thought I better grab it before somebody else did. All right.
Okay.
All right. Sorry, it was like. Have a good day.
We'll take it.
Okay, Sarah, you're here for the public hearing?
Morning.
Good morning.
I do remember.
This time, we will open the public hearing on ordinance number three oh eight Pioneer Cemetery Commission.
Any comments?
You have the floor.
All right, so the reason we're we're updating our ordinance is, there's two, two items, section two and section three. So currently, we are maintaining twenty-five cemeteries, and at this point, they are all all have less than twelve burials in the last fifty years. So on the other hand, we are getting requests for, for selling lots in those cemeteries. And it's potential that some of those could exceed the twelve, meaning that they would technically not be a pioneer cemetery. So we would like to continue to maintain those cemeteries. And so our goal is here is to say that even if they exceed the twelve, if we've been maintaining them, that we will continue to be able to maintain her. And I think that is agreeable with the state law. So in the second item, section three talks about cemeteries that already exceed twelve burials in the last fifty years, and the potential for us to take those over if they, in some cases, if the trustees are not maintaining them. And in this case, it's, if the state law says if they're less than twenty-four in the previous fifty years, you can, we are authorized to take care of them, except they wouldn't be considered a pioneer cemetery. And so section three says that if we request that, we would come to you and ask that permission, and then if we both agree, we would look into taking care of that.
So it would be case by case scenario with that, if they weren't pioneer cemeteries, it would be each, each one would be considered on its own entity, yes.
Correct. An example of that was Hazen that we talked to you about earlier in here. They contacted us, the trustees had contacted us and asked if we would help them. I had, I've had a couple discussions with them since that, they didn't realize per se that they could budget more money to, to maintain. And, and they have a bunch of trees that need to be taken out. So, so I recently talked to Mark Benowitz, one of the trustees, and Mark said there are plenty to take some of the trees out this winter after the crops are out. And then they are also planning to levy for more taxes so that they can start to take care of their, their cemeteries. They are not interested at this point in time of turning it over to us. And our commissioners were concerned about taking care of our existing cemeteries before we would move in to take care of Hazel.
Sure.
So I think we're all in agreement. They would like us to help with a little education as to how to restore those stones, and I've agreed that I will help them, and others probably will also, so get them started.
So how many burials are in there in the last fifty years?
They're, I think they were right at twelve, and they were having, there was a cremation that they were going to put in the summer or fall, and then, so they were going to exceed the twelve, they'd be at thirteen. But they have a huge area where they might be able to sell another hundred to two hundred burial lots.
Really?
Yeah, so they.
Where's this one? Oh, North of Preston?
It's, yeah, north of Preston, it's on the Preston Highway where E seventeen goes across through Springbrook. It's, if you go straight, after E seventeen, you'd be right in the cemetery.
That one always appeared to be maintained pretty well. I don't know, Trumberg did that or who did that?
Somebody in Larry Ambrosi tells me, one of the trustees in the past did some work on it, but that's been several years now. There's, I did a quick inspection. There's probably fifty stones in there that are leaning, broken, falling down, that need, need repair.
Well, that's the one I believe I talked to you several times about, that people went to the cemetery and were very unhappy with the upkeep and the mowing and said that.
It looked fairly good from the road, but it is a little ways from the road.
Once you, once you get in it, you can see it needs help.
Yeah.
But I think they're committed now to, to doing something about it, which is a good thing.
We're, okay, we're still in public hearing.
Yeah. Any other comments?
No further comments from the.
Well, I got questions for the cemetery board, but that's about it. Does it pertain to this ordinance?
No.
Then I would make a motion to close the public. Second.
The motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carry.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three oh eight as presented and to waive the second, third hearing. Second.
Motion to approve ordinance number three oh eight and waive the second and third public hearing, it would be effective on publication. All those in favor?
I.
I, motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address that now or?
All I would like to know is, he's on the Pioneer, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I've got one of them cemeteries on my farm that. We can't find stones. But we know what's there. When I bought the farm, there was supposedly a father and a son buried with a big fence. Yet we have never seen.
Three years. So we've never seen it.
It is Sprigville's first cemetery. Up on top of the hill. At one point I had. Done.
Done what we're done with.
They come out with the wire hangers.
Dress.
Yeah, dress. And he claimed that there was like five or six right there at the top of the hill. But I'm in the understanding that there was actually five acres of that. We've never seen a stone. We've looked for stones. We've tried to mark where. They said that the people were at. But. So much for that.
Have you? So they got a new imaging they use called Lidar. And it shoots right through all the trees and vegetation and stuff and it's amazing. What you can pick up like all the old fence lines and like the grave would. Be a different, could be a different depth or something. They might, they found Indian burial grounds like that. With this, and we do have it through GIS and if you can locate the spot. Called Lidar.
We know kind of where the guy did the the witching that he thinks he found.
Yeah, if you know. It might show up.
Yeah. See, our farm used to have. That was the Griss Mill or whatever. At our main gate, right as you cross the bridge east of Sprigville, there's a driveway that goes to the south. That's our farm and right next to that bluff is where.
The Griss Bill was. It burned down and then they put a flour mill. And then Preston put up a power flour mill. So then everybody kind of.
So.
Where that bottom used to be the Mississippi River before they put the locks and dams in. And people had called me liar for this. And when they put the new bridge in, Schrader took his dozer and just made a straight cut down. One bluff and you could see every layer of water and rocks.
So you were right.
Not only that, but I had somebody decided to that I had to have a dyke made. On one of my houses. And. I told him, I said, there's no way you're gonna make a house. I says, where are you going to get the dirt? He said, you got good dirt on both sides. I says, quit looking at that map on. Says I farm the top of each side. So I says, let's go out to the field and I'll show you. Took him out to the one side. Which was on the north side of the slope. I told him, kick the ground. Which he did. I said, now what do you see? Sand. I says, yes, it's all sand, but that top. Layer where we haul heavy manure and the make. Ground for the crop. You can take the tractor loader, literally put the bucket straight down. Raise front wheels off the ground, put it in forward here and just like a layer cake, just shove it off. You set the wheels down, the wheels go down in the sand. It wouldn't hold. Okay, I'll make it out of sand. Okay. Cut it short. The guy had to come to do the work. In the first hour, he was stuck four times. In the sand. He wanted to know if there was any place where there's rock. I says, there's one spot on the south side. I got hit a rock and let it blow up over it. And he says, well, I'll try it. Right, it was only one rock. He took off the top four inches, five inches of dirt. And he hit hit the sand. Well, he went down about four feet in the sand and he had a gray. Dirt matter. I don't know what you want to call it. But it was enough to make the dyke out of that gray matter. Under the gray matter was the black dirt. And he could get enough black dirt to. Level off in the hollow so you can sow grass. So the hills there are actually upside down because of the river.
So my dad tells a story, he did, I mean, he's been gone for twenty one years, but. When he was a kid, this guy told him about an old man telling him about the longboats coming through there on the Mississippi River. Before the.
You know, we're abstracted talks about some of that stuff too.
So there was some major shifting through that bottom.
Right.
And all the way along the Mississippi River.
Actually, I've got a picture of a paddle wheeler coming down the Mississippi in that area too.
Really? Wow, that's cool.
So I've got a picture of the Griss Mill. Got the paddle wheeler. And I says, it's fun to take in the history of that area. Because I had a boy that was told he could tear a house down for Harris Taylor. I don't know if you know it. Out of Sprigville.
Okay.
We tore the house down because it was a hotel. We left the water pump jack is still standing there. We got in the basement. We found the door. Opened up the door, which is caved in for the tunnel that went to the river.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that now you go back to the Indians couldn't burn them out because they had access to the water at all times. Then you had this underground railroad and whatever that went through it too. So I says, there is a lot of history.
Absolutely. I was gonna say, there's a lot of history there.
I did a place after somebody just across the river by the flare north of there. And there had the same thing. The house sat here and the barn was quite a ways away from it. And there was a tunnel from the house to the barn and there was room halfway in there. And they said they'd take a wagon down. River and pick up slaves or whatever and bring them back into the barn and then they come down and have dinner and. And sleep in that room and then in the morning they take them out again. So yeah, that underground and they found a lot of tunnels up in the Buick area too.
Oh, yeah.
If you work and.
Get together with.
Yeah.
Yeah, and have a conversation. Could you give a brief update on, is it the bud over there between south of?
Of our county building?
Yes, but. We did. We did some work there. We had a survey. And we sent the survey information off to the landowner because we're looking, we're we're trying to get. Bud fenced and we're also trying the cemetery itself fenced. And we're trying to get him to give us the legal access for amusement. And we we've had a couple responses from from the landowner. But we haven't gotten to the point yet of getting that finalized.
What about like the work that you were doing? Are you still working in that area or?
We landscaped and seeded it this spring and. We finished the work last fall, so it's it's pretty well done. When we landscaped, we did find another partial stone. So we're gonna do something with that, but it's other than that, this.
You could send me, like, and see what happened. Or is there a discrepancy of of the area to with the landowner or the landowner's?
Initially, well, the. The landowner's deed says the cemetery is accepted off the deed. Or exempted from the deed and it's it says it's one acre more or less. So there were originally some fence posts put in just to kind of designate where it was. And we we would like to and we requested to extend those by about five feet. So that we could. Mow on the outside of a fence that we put a fence, you know, where those posts were. And so what we've requested from the landowner or what we. Survey is point four or five acres. So we're not, we're not taking, potentially we could take the full one acre. But we we don't really need that and point four or five is sufficient for us. It gives us a lot of access. You know, to turn around and do other things out there if we need to. But. The landowner is questioning why we extended beyond those posts. And we we've explained that we're not sure where the cemetery. Line was, since the cemetery had been bulldozed, the stones have been pushed. And so we put them back in best order we could, but. We don't know exactly where that where that boundary was.
I apologize, I haven't been out there since. Is your trailer still there?
No.
That's a long since I've been there, so.
The trailer is that country shallow. So. Once the season, you know, we're still doing a little bit of work, but once the season's done. I've put together a list of things that we've accomplished during the year and I'll share that with you at some point.
That'd be great.
But yeah.
It's amazing what your group does.
Yeah, that's a good group of people.
Okay.
That one more question pertaining to the cemeteries. All cemeteries. I had somebody come up and ask if you have to be buried in a vault. Can you just be wrapped in a cloth and put in the ground?
You're asking the wrong guy here.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Legal advice before I answer that.
We'll ask Sarah if she if she knows.
I guess if nobody sees you, yeah.
I don't know if that's by state or not, but I have two aunts that were buried in Wisconsin. And they were, they were buried, just be wrapped in a cloth and buried under a tree. So it's possible in some states, but I don't know if Iowa allows it.
We would, that's. I was wondering because we had a priest. Got buried in Chicago. And and he just wanted a board placed in the bottom of the grave and him laid on it. No wrapping, just laid on the board. And that's the way he was buried. I've had the people come with cremations from out of state. And I said, they were the first ones. It is, excuse me, but I'm a. Director of one of the board directors for the Catholic Cemetery in Preston. So this is why I'm asking. I gotta take care of the cemetery. I gotta measure that. They only give you a four by eight grave. So if you put a stone down, that's two foot. You gotta move the stone to be buried under. Can't be down.
I'm sure there's rules and regulations in the code, probably even in what the regulations would be. So I would guess it would be a legal question for someone.
Did you sign in?
No.
Oh, we'll sign in with your phone number and we'll talk to Sarah and see what she says and maybe she'll give you a call.
Well, my first cremation was somebody from California wanted to be buried. Cremation between dad and mom in the middle of the winter. I've never handled something like that before. So I ended up taking a wide flat piece of iron and making a chisel out of it and cutting a hole down between the two boxes. Figuring a urn. When they come, it was only a half a sandwich bag. I was never so disgusted in my life. In the middle of the winter to chop a hole. So that's my first experience with the cremations. Now it's been quite common.
Sure.
So could have been on a shelf for the winter and beautiful spring. They're coming with new things.
Oh, sure.
Of what they could do and what they can't. So. I tried to change it, but after fifty seven years, I'm eighty years old, I says, I can't handle it no more. I. Just can't do what we used to do and we always did it for nothing.
Sure.
And now they're hollering that the church don't have enough money for. For to do repairs at the church because. We have no income. So I don't know if there's a way, but like I said, the church is different than what the state is. But I like to keep up on the state.
Well, we'll talk to Sarah and we'll get back to you and let let you know what she said about if somebody can be buried just wrapped in a cloth.
See if there's any new rules on cremation too.
Okay.
You won't let your information on the challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw.
Probably won't see my writing. I don't write.
Alright, you want to be right?
Change. There's a P.
That's alright, just give me your phone number.
As I tell cemetery phone. Three one nine.
Okay.
Four eight oh six three eight four.
Three one nine four eight oh six three eight four.
Right.
Okay. You answered this one, I'll probably do.
Usually got that one. That's a well answer.
That'll do. My home's a cemetery.
You'd be surprised how many total markers it's stopping.
Well, it sounded me last night after all, so.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, Luanne, we're ready for you if you want to come over.
Good morning.
Morning.
Alright, calendar this morning. This afternoon at three o'clock is a green space redevelopment meeting. For Larry and it has been relocated to the Coco City Hall. Or Zoom, not at the library, nor is it City Hall. And tonight at seven o'clock is a special board of health meeting. Leave that downstairs. I can check on that. Tomorrow, Wednesday, November second and nine AM is the RTA meeting in debut for all of you. And at six PM tomorrow night is the nine one one service board committee or service board meeting for Mike. Monday, I don't have anything for the third or the fourth. Monday, November seventh at seven thirty AM. As in addition to the calendar, Jack has an early childhood Iowa executive board meeting by Zoom that morning. And at nine o'clock that morning, Conservation will be giving an update on the Destination Iowa Project. And that will be downstairs in the community room. Nine o'clock on Monday. Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, we said that a couple of weeks ago, so.
Alright.
Right.
That's just a continuation of the one we had a couple of weeks ago.
Correct.
Yeah.
An update, if you will. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November eighth. That will be election day. And at four o'clock that afternoon, Larry has a McCooper River Water Shit Management Authority Executive Meeting. I think by Zoom. Okay, some of my business we've already talked about this morning. That's alright, it works just fine that way. The one thing that hasn't been talked about and Larry, maybe you can help me with this. Isaac's or Isaac sent a request or invoice for helping to pay for the soil compaction. Project or project study funding request. So if I haven't got. Been told that I can pay that invoice yet, so I need to get the word from the three of you if you want me to go ahead and pay that. So. Larry knows more about it than I do. Take your package.
So what they're doing is the soil stays on all the different types of soil in Iowa. And the absorption rate of rain and what it does, how long it takes to dissipate. So if you had an inch of rain, how long? Should you stay off of that property before you get on heavy equipment? And they're trying to get that set so they can, when they do these pipelines and stuff where they're digging up. They can have some of these fields and they've found some fields, it takes. They can have some of these fields and they've found some fields, it takes like eight years before the. Crops actually come back to where, where you can't see where it happened. So they're trying to get a guideline as to, you know, when they do the soil studies for the digging, they know what they are. And that gives you guidelines of how soon you should be. It's just a way to protect the farmers a little more from crop losses. With a little more information about everything.
So, have you heard how many of the counties are doing it? Six hundred dollars is what their request is?
I do not know how many, come back.
What is the deadline?
Four o'clock today.
So I know you talked about it here a couple of weeks ago and you were gonna check into, um. Like if there was a percentage of counties that are doing it, I mean, I know we don't, I know they're talking about the windmill things and the, and the pipeline things, which. We don't really have as of yet, but. Major.
And we do have some pipelines that are in. Never recommendation. I mean, I go back and forth on it, but. I mean, it, it makes sense to know, to have a little more knowledge about.
So they will include Jackson County in their study then, we're gonna have some kind of samples or some kind of stuff to look at. From our, for our contribution to this. I mean, if they're gonna study in other counties and we're paying for our county, as long as they're doing the study in Jackson County and. Probably okay, but you know, long as we get some kind of information about our county, you know.
Well, I think that's important.
Well, yes, we're gonna contribute to it. I, I, again, I'm with Jack, I'd like to proceed, let's see a percentage of how many counties are participating, you know.
Must we give Rachel a call maybe as?
I can find out.
Do you need action on that?
I just need to know whether I need to pay that when we get to claims. And it's already, I've already not paid it through one claim cycle, so they didn't put a deadline on it.
If you find out there's sixty percent of the counties participating, then it's over half.
Well, since it's supposed to be paid by today or commit, committed by today. And if we could be assured that they're going to have some information on Jackson County, I guess I'd be okay with it.
Yeah.
I mean, they started doing it on October fifteenth when they started doing the study.
Yeah, I seen the letter from Isaac when they promoting it, you know.
So do we want to authorize the six hundred dollars so that Luanne? I would say it's compared to what we authorize for other things.
I would make a motion to approve the soil compaction project funding request.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. I wish I carried. So.
First on your agenda, do we make a decision on the welcome center? Where is it going for sure? I didn't catch all that.
What's the new place down there?
A quick stop to me.
Iowa City.
Island City Harbor.
City Harbor.
So that's down on the south, south end of.
They got a real nice store there.
I, I know that they're putting in Harbor and they're putting in a restaurant and all of that.
There's gonna be a lot, a lot of traffic through in and out of there and if, and if there's. Well, I'm here and there's no expense to us, really.
None, none.
I don't see a negative to it, no.
I have a floating, floating cabin there that you can rent out. And they have two cabin cruisers that they rent out for RV and D. So I think it's gonna see a lot of traffic and.
I would just notify Tom that it's okay for them to take the sign. If they want the sign with the map, it will be. In the, on the courthouse proper, it's here, they would come and could come and get it here.
Need official action on that too.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion in a second to relocate the welcome center signs, all those in favor. I wish I carried.
Right, that's ahead.
Okay, thank you, Luanne. Well, it is five minutes after ten or four minutes after ten, so at this time we'll open the public hearing on. Physical year twenty-three budget amendment. And I assume that's you, Lisa.
Um, I handed out. This morning, what is the reason why? We need to amend our, our budget. You know, really, it's just kind of some cleanup work, so to speak, we have. You know, I obviously like Lori, it's gonna be adding a new person. Um, you know, we just have some, just some, some money that we need to move and that's why we're asking for. Um, the budget amendment on the bottom of this, the explanation of changes is for public safety, mental health transports, that's twenty thousand. Medical examiner and juvenile probation is fifty-three thousand, county environmental, which is the zoning is sixty-seven thousand and ninety-four dollars. And on the administration side, we need to make a change for employee retirement insurance of four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven. And I would ask for a motion to approve resolution number nine twenty-six dash eleven dash zero one dash twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, comments from anybody that's on the line or? Hearing, seeing no one that wishes to address the board, we have a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor. I wish I carried. Now, we have a motion to approve. The, um, budget amendment.
Motion to approve.
As a second, is your second, third hearing on that also?
No. Motion in a second to approve the budget amendment, all those in favor. I wish I carried.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like it's Becky Chilton's turn now.
Nice shirt.
Thank you.
Maybe she, when she's done with it, she'll give it to you.
Okay, so a couple of things for the board today. First thing is the hiring of the zoning administrative assistant. On the board recently approved that new position at thirty hours a week for the zoning department. Um, the range of pay was set between seventeen and twenty dollars an hour. We advertised for the position and Lori and I interviewed, um, there were sixteen applicants that had applied. We did make an offer and this gal has accepted. So, um, at the thirty hours per week, Lori had kind of set the position to work eight thirty to two thirty Monday through Friday. And then they will attend all of the zoning board and commission meetings as well, which are Monday evenings, like the third and fourth Mondays of the month. Um, and then, um, there's flexibility there depending on Lori's schedule to cover the office, you know, shift the hours and stuff like that, but for the most part, she'll be here eight thirty to two thirty. So I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Ruth Eltridge at eighteen dollars per hour. With a fifty cent increase upon completion of a ninety day probationary period and a fifty cent increase upon successful completion of a six month review.
Go move.
Motion in a second. All those in favor. I wish I carried.
On the EMS systems coordinator, um, the association had their quarterly meeting last week, which Mike and I did attend in Sevillah. Um, we had a lot of very good conversation with all of the service departments there, I think the only one that wasn't represented was Lamont. Possibly, I think everybody else was there, a lot of good conversation, understand a lot better as to what, um, our coordinator was doing for those entities. Um, it was definitely decided that, um, there is a need to continue with the position. Um, the question is what capacity and like how and who should oversee the position. Um, we left it with them that I would send a survey out to each department and kind of do a needs assessment. Um, to get uniform information for what he was doing from every department. What kind of calls are running, what kind of audits are needed and those kind of things, and that way we would have information to move forward as a board as to what direction to go with that position. Um, there's been a lot of chatter already amongst the little group of people about what needs to be done, system standards and those kind of things. And they do have the state field representative that's been in on the emails with them currently trying to help them get things filed and need to be filed that are not and all of that kind of stuff now, so. Um, I will have the survey out to them by the end of this week and we'll get the information and then we can kind of decide where to go from there. Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, there was a lot of input from a lot of different areas, you know, and, and, you know, as most of us know, that all these services. Are volunteer other than maybe, well, Bellevue has since hired one paramedic, but. Like, you know, they're all volunteer and it's, it's hard for them to keep up with the, with restrictions and administrative. You know, the system standard is saying that the reports that they gotta file in a timely manner. You know, they all have full-time jobs, they all have families and we respect what, what they're doing and. And, you know, we also took into consideration, could this person basically? Be prepared for a call and say, hey, our, our people are gone today, could you cover our area today, you know? And, and with more oversight, I would say from us to have him, him or her. You know, report here to, to basically a home base per se and say, this is where I'm going, this is what I'm doing.
Well, and this is precisely why we hired Ryan.
Yeah.
Changed since then as far as, uh, the standards and the, and the whatnot, but yeah, they're, they're regulated and. And it goes back to these smaller departments, you can't, so they gotta, they gotta have to call it, whatever they call it, they gotta have to join with three other four different departments. But you can't be on your own unless you have a hundred calls a year. So you have to, you have to join with other.
According to regulation and that paperwork.
Was that like a twenty-eighty agreement or?
It's an affiliate agreement, to be honest with you, that's what that department calls it. So the, so the state of Iowa has it, has this position for the state, so he is the one that's helping, Chad Patterson reached out after the meeting to get the information that they needed. Sounds like Ryan had kind of started the process that the affiliation paperwork was not filed. Um, so he's working with the agencies that have to be, I think there's seven of them that have to be affiliated in order to meet the requirements. Like Bellevue, um, wouldn't have to whether they will or not.
Well, they're talking about non-transporter transport services, so if all the non-transporter would, would affiliate.
Yeah.
Per se, and then Lamont would maybe affiliate with Bellevue and then, yeah.
Right, so they're working through that now, um, but as far as the actual coordinator position, you know, when you think about coordinator and I think the intent of him was to develop the system standards for each department. But like Mike said, the administrative side of it is so heavy. That he was doing a lot of that for those departments to make sure the administrative paperwork was filed where it needed to be, because it's all good and well to do this stuff, but if you don't file it then. So it, it sounds like that's kind of been a workload, it's been lifted from the departments, but it's, it's a big requirement to keep them from doing.
That sounds like maybe he was doing that remotely, either maybe from Preston or Sedilla's station, you know, and using equipment and so. He could actually cover some of that, but I guess we were just kind of unaware of some of that.
Some of those things, yeah, we have a lot better of understanding, I had a lot of questions that being answered and. Um, they need quarterly, they're willing to meet again if we resolve anything in the meantime, but I think the survey is that they were kind of all over the board as to what service and how much it was provided to these departments. So I think getting an actual understanding of who needs when and when would help kind of direct.
Definitely was a big issue for all of them is the amount of training they could get.
Yeah, the EMT and then ACLS were two of the very large ones that Ryan did and they're very much appreciative and really do need to have this position with that. So we'll get the information from them, we'll come back to the board with that and kind of develop.
Okay. So you're asking for a motion to dissolve the Jackson.
In the meantime, this board of supervisors did establish the advisory council back in two thousand fourteen by, um, bylaws. So this council has not met for, I don't even know how long. Um, in order for them, in order for the bylaws to get amended, they have to need, two thirds of the, um, council has to agree at two consecutive meetings. Um, it's the advice of the county attorney that since these are not being used right now and they actually probably aren't valued to us going forward. It's her recommendation that you just dissolve the council, which will dissolve the bylaws. If we get to the point where we need to have an advisory committee again, in some fashion, we should probably just start fresh and establish that. So the motion would be to dissolve the Jackson County Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council effective immediately.
I make that motion.
I would second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor.
Hi.
I wish I carried.
With that being said, your, your EMS commission now is your go-to information.
The commission, yeah.
So they have, in this old commission, thirty-five members, I don't know, something, they can never get a forum and they could. But now, so they have a representative from EM, each EMS service. And that's what.
In the association, and they actually said that the, the, pretty much the EMS association that have now are the same people that were attending this, the council. And also, I think that's kind of why I kind of fizzled it self out was that they were meeting the same people, meeting twice.
Makes sense.
The next thing I have up for discussion is our county cell service. So we currently have all county wide cellular service and our infield data service through US later. So years ago, each department, if they have a cell phone, they have an independent plan with an independent carrier, some Verizon. So we lumped them all together in one plan, which was a huge cost savings to the county and that has been with US. Over the recent months, year, we have seen a decline in the service in our area. And most recently, um, the sheriff's department had a very high need in Bellevue to be able to communicate via those cell phones and their coverages were dropped repeatedly. Um, it has been on my list to research other options and that has kind of been a driving force to revisit this right now and see if we can get something corrected. Brandon Beck went ahead and reached out to FirstNet, who is a public service agency. Um, provider of cell service, it's dedicated to public service, they have nationwide broadband networks. Um, they brought in some phones and some data, um, hotspots for them to use in the areas where they know they have dropped coverage and they've been seeing great coverage with them. We currently have an added feature on the sheriff's department cell plans for public service like first responder, where they get first service to the towers. Um, all of FirstNet, they're just that, it's all first responder type coverage that you get. Um, I would like to move the sheriff's department for sure over to FirstNet. The price is less expensive than what we see for their department with US sailor. Um, and then I did provide them the countywide bill to see how they compare with the other rates. All of our sheriff's department phones are the same, all of their hotspots are the same price. Where throughout the rest of the county, we have different plans and phones and some are pay-as-you-go and some are unlimited, so. Um, they just need to look at that, you know, to make their comparison as far as the rest of the service will go. Um, but moving them, moving the sheriff's department is definitely the direction we need to go, I did talk to Elizabeth a little bit this morning because she's on the field all over the place and she basically said her service is. So when you're in the Bellevue area and.
So have we experimented or would they give us some hotspots or test equipment for secondary road?
Yeah, and that would be a thing, before we moved anybody else, we would need to, I would need to talk to all of the departments because they don't, um, support. Android devices right now, unless it's a FirstNet Android device, or they do have some, they will provide for free or you can buy some other models. Um, so we would just need to have that discussion with those, I know they use Android, so that would be a discussion to have with them.
That's interesting that they don't recognize the Android phone or system.
I think they have to, it has to be their phone.
They do, it just has to be a first.
Has to be a first net phone.
Is that a first net phone? Yeah, you like it? Andrew? If he's in Seville, we can get a hold of him.
Yeah. Have you had any issues with that? I mean, they were, so we've been with US Cellular long, and I feel we don't have a contract with them, which is, it's required a two-month contract. Through the state pricing system, there is no, um, cancellation for some reason, it doesn't work out, we need to cancel within two years. Um, they do the same phone pricing and availability of free phones over eighteen months or whatever that is, so that shouldn't be an issue. So I would like to go ahead and proceed with having them drop the contract for the sheriff's department while they analyze the rest of the account and we'll bring that back.
I guess we're not obligated to anything to, if, unless, yeah, if they draw it up and, yeah. So we know that the price of it has, you said was less than.
Yeah, so their devices for our sheriff's department are thirty-nine ninety-nine for each smartphone and then thirty-eight dollars each for their data. Devices that they use for their in-car laptops, um, we pay forty-five and some change for each of those devices right now, but of course there's the fees on top of these. So when it comes out, this ended up being just a little bit less per month, their monthly bill will be about eight ninety-seven, right now they're right at a thousand for that department. But we've seen some change over there sort of last month, still it was a little bit different.
And it says here it's a two-year agreement, is there?
It's a two-year initial agreement, yeah. It what?
They can't change that number for two years, Adam.
Right, which I think these rates for them have been, I mean, I've changed from.
What I'm getting is we raised the price of our dump truck twice already, so.
Yeah, I think this is a little bit different than that.
So can our, our i, our iPads are they on?
That's so they would have, that's one of the things that, so those are on cellular right now, they would be able to provide that service to the question as if it's the same. That's so they would have, that's one of the things that, so those are on cellular right now. They would be able to provide that service to the questions if it's the same.
Hard time to find at my house.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I've actually driven over the waste's parking lot.
And we have some, like our, we have a couple like the county attorney on call horns pays you go, so we just pay three dollars a month for it and then we pay for every minute she uses it. So the bill's always like ten bucks or less. So they do have a, a ten dollar plan. You know, if she had a month where her bill was only six, she'd be out four bucks, so it's just kind of some of those things to consider, so. But I would like to go ahead and have them draft the contract for the sheriff's department and start the movement, getting those moved over.
Will they give us a number for the rest of us, you think, by then or?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And maybe we'll have it all before, you know?
I'd make that motion.
Tell you.
Motion in a second to proceed with the sellers. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
And I would anticipate the gentleman that they were working with was out last week. So I would anticipate having numbers for the rest of it by the end of this week, so maybe something we can wrap up next week. And then the last thing I have for discussion was the twenty-twenty-three holiday observances. So New Year's Day falls on Sunday this year, January first. By policy, we would normally observe that on Monday, January second. In the past years, we have not observed it when it felt like that because the code states that the board shall hold its first meeting of each year on the first day of January, which is not a holiday, Saturday, Sunday or holiday. So you take out your Saturday, Sunday holiday, you meet on Monday. We, Lisa and I visited with the county attorney about that because most other counties are closing as well as the state, so we questioned why do we not close? And it's the opinion of the county attorney, this board does have the authority to designate that a holiday, which therefore you are not open on the holiday, your standard meeting will still be Tuesday the third. So we do this by resolution, but before we prepare that resolution, we just want to have the conversation to make sure there weren't any concerns. So just kind of topic of discussion today to see your thoughts on that.
All right, so does that become a paid time of the evening?
It is, I mean, it is.
It is, I don't know.
Okay.
So our meeting will be on Tuesday like it normally would be.
Yeah, that was kind of the one of the barriers why we did that when you have no elected officials that can, I mean, I think this was all when you can swear them in and all that. So it was just kind of a matter of, we just never really dove into why we don't.
Yeah, I mean, it was a recommendation of the county attorney. We, we did ask the questions and.
So, you need action on that?
No, we'll prepare the resolution as we normally do. I just want to make sure there wasn't any issue or.
We had people ask us already, so that's why.
Well, I, I doubt that you're gonna find very few businesses open on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that was it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from boards or commissions?
Such as additional on Saturday, Friday. And we apply for grants for a million dollar grant. One grant for the United States. And it's for, um, when people get released from work police program, it'll pay you like a down payment on their apartment. And one or two months payment, so when they get out, most of them don't have any money and that's, you know, throws them right back into the circus thing. So it's a four and a half year grant. The first year setting up and then they'll run for three years and the last six months is, um, to see how it works and what's going on with that, but we're fortunate to get that grant. So the money's coming. So that's huge for helping people out to get back on their feet.
How does a person apply for that type when they, if they're coming out of the system? That, how do they?
It's for all five counties, I mean, for all our counties.
And, okay, so.
They don't have to. The people working down there will set it up for them. It'll be.
Is this? If they're in the federal system, was that?
I think it's the same.
Okay, so if they were to say they were from Jackson County. But of course they're now housed in the federal system, so they might be in New Jersey.
Oh.
So how, how do they apply and get, if they're coming back, if they're gonna place them back in Iowa again, so be it, not maybe necessarily Jackson County. But if they're gonna place somebody back in Iowa, how would they go about getting into that?
Good question.
We'll check into that to go a little bit.
Now, how many are, the plot around?
I mean, it's nice to know if that's out there that you could use it for maybe even, you know.
It's for people that live in the county, so if, if they claim residency here, they should be able to get it. And hopefully they would set that up.
And I would certainly think the facility that they're being discharged from would
contact.
Help them get things, paperwork and that stuff. I would think that they would have a pre-release.
And a lot of times they have probation too, so that would tie in with, get them in the system. Okay.
Because I know they, I guess we all may know somebody that could, you know, benefit from the system, you know, I mean.
Question I have is how long do you have to be personally?
You know, any parameters for that kind of thing or not, yeah?
I know they're contacting people that have rental properties, see if they have.
That would see what other kind of information you can get for that, that'd be interesting.
Because I know they've changed, they've changed it so that they can give them medication after they get out for a certain period of time, so that they don't go off of the medication and they have problems.
Is this for housing only? Is that what that grant's for, housing only?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the meeting today?
Um, you know, I had a question. A while back here, I don't know if it was just three weeks ago, they talked about applying for Brownfield, I think, come through ECI Brownfield grant funding money. I think I've asked this before, we've talked about it before, would, are the same asylum or the jail and Andrew qualify for Brownfield? How do we know or how, where we could go to find out?
I would, I would say probably not.
Needs to have letter, asbestos and, or the criteria. Yeah, yeah, I will feel so, yeah. I don't know, be worth a phone call.
My gut feeling is no. Um, but it doesn't hurt to ask, no.
I mean, they talk about dilapidated properties, you know? Does it have?
Oh, and from, from buildings.
Groundfield, yeah. Unused buildings, like saying no different than Earlville when they built the new garage up there, you know, it was an old car dealership and the building was.
But there would have been contamination there, would there be contamination?
Yeah, I don't know if that's a stipulation or not, I guess.
I, that's part of it.
That's what makes it brown.
That's why, that's why the, uh, the circle society is eligible for some of those fundings and have gotten some of those funds.
That'd be a good question for ECIA tomorrow when we're up there at our.
Yeah, we could ask him.
We don't like their answer.
We can come up with some kind of contamination quick.
Yeah. Just have the guy that's renting it spray it a little more than they should.
Well, there is something there on the past anyway. The insane asylum, there is a crack going up that one mall, which probably fits. On the south. And that would be, maybe fall into that for a grant.
Um, first, good. Update on the dresser there a little bit. I don't know if you have anything, Larry, for that, but I know that the special meeting is pertaining to that and um, so that's going forward anyway. But they have all their reasons signed, I think, or all their, he's not that any.
Wow, that's great.
That's good news.
Except for the four that were in compliant. And that's what the special meetings.
And those tested okay so that they.
They did, they're all in compliance and the, and the question was whether, you know, if, if so many years, be it next year, be it fifteen years, if something happens to their, their site. You know, or their well, can they drill a new well? I said, well, if they're still in compliance, they probably could. Or there's nothing, there's nothing, there's nothing in the new system like the system when, we made the first ordinance, it came from Bellevue's. If I remember correctly, they came from Bellevue requesting because it was all or none. You know, now they're not even gonna run a stub to the house, so there's no way they can hook up to it unless they do it in the dark very quietly.
Well, they'd have to tap the main, we cannot put a tap there.
No.
Without a contract from the whole plan.
So it's gonna be a totally their expense if they decide to hook to it, so.
That meeting is tonight, that special, yeah, we're helping you. And then it'll be on our agenda next week.
It's in Bellevue.
It's, it's down here.
Here, home tonight.
Okay. Seven.
Okay, public company. I didn't realize that was part of them.
That's what it's.
That's the BOH special meeting tonight.
I think Elizabeth sent an email out yesterday.
Yeah, she did, for all of you, yes.
Okay, anything else?
No, there's no further, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.